Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Haverford Board of Commissioners. It's February 14th, 2022. Before we start anything, I will just first report the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners met twice in executive session between the last regular meeting and now. We met on January 24th to discuss legal matters, and we met on February 7th after our meeting last week for personnel and real estate matters. Mr. Berman, if you would, call the roll.
Commissioner D'Amelio is ill this evening and couldn't be with us. Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Wexler?
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes? Here. Chief, welcome back. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America, the Republic of the United States, visible, pretty good justice.
It is now time for the -- it is now time for the Citizens Forum. As people recall, the Citizens Forum first is made up of registered speakers who call in in advance, who can speak on any topic, and then members of the public are invited to speak after that if they have comments to make on something on the agenda item, and then as a reminder, on any agenda item. And then as a reminder, at the end of the meeting, but before any other business from commissioners, we also invite the public up to speak on any topic. So, I am informed by Mr. Berman that we do not have any registered speakers for tonight, so I invite any member of the audience. I'll start on the left side. Any member of the audience who would like to speak on an agenda item, please come forward. You have three minutes. Just give your name and your address, and then the floor is yours. And do we want to turn that podium around?
Yes, if there are speakers, we will turn it around.
Is there anybody on the left who'd like to speak on an agenda item? Is there anybody on the right who'd like to speak on an agenda item? Well, so, we will now move on to a proclamation. I call on my colleague, Commissioner McCluskey, who will be presenting a very special proclamation tonight for some outstanding young people here in Haverford Township.
Good evening, all. So, I have with me tonight Sidney Bolden and Marissa Tor, and we're going to offer a proclamation tonight in honor of Black History Month and some events over the past couple of years here in Haverford Township. So, whereas each February, National Black History Month serves as both a celebration and a powerful reminder that black history is American history, black culture is American culture, and black stories are essential to the ongoing story of America, our faults, our struggles, progress, and aspirations. And whereas, following several highly-publicized incidents of brutality against African-Americans at the hands of certain police in several cities in the United States, including the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, planned and spontaneous demonstrations and protests took place all across our country. And whereas, a group of young people attending Haverford Senior High School formed a group entitled "Haver Town Stands with Black Lives Matter" and undertook to lead a march in Haverford Township on June 7th, 2020. And whereas, these young people worked closely with civic and community leaders with the Haverford Police Department, first to organize and then to manage the logistics and the route and the program of this march. And whereas, the fruits of those efforts was a significant, impactful, and peaceful event with thousands of participants from Haverford Township and Delaware County, including the township manager and many employees, the entire elected body of Haverford Township, Delaware County District Attorney Jack Stolzheimer, and U.S. Representative Mary Gay Scanlon. Now, there be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford extend their appreciation to these individual members of "Haver Town Stands with Black Lives Matter" for their important role in black history in Haverford Township: Sidney Bolden, June Park, Marissa Tor, Abia Nubisi, Trey Eminow, Tom Barnes, and Lexi Ferrer. Proclaim this 14th day of February, 2022, Township of Haverford. See Lawrence Holmes, President. And just so the residents watching know, we have on Zoom, because obviously, these kids were at the high school before, so many of them are at college or away doing other things. So, Sidney and Marissa are here to represent all of them, and we'll either -- we can either give you these, or we'll have them pick them up. All over the country. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey, and thank you to these fine, fine, young members of the Haverford community who performed an admirable and quite meaningful event that day. Thank you again. I now ask for the Bureau of Fire report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Wexler.
My report from the Chair of the Bureau of Fire, Chief Bill Hatton, this month, the January fire statistics. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to 101 incidents in January. The membership response total was 1,421 members, with an average response of 20 members per incident. The companies are all currently working on their annual hazardous material recertification for 2022, along with their regular training hours. In January, one firefighter injury occurred. It was reported in the 1,100 block of Westchester Pike. He suffered a fractured ankle while operating in a vehicle fire. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. I will now ask our township auditor to present his monthly report.
There. All right. I've reviewed the expenses and warrants for this meetings. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. In addition, I did find that we are -- we have one less problem now. Ben Simmons is gone.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Auditor. I now invite our township manager to provide the township manager update.
Thank you. I wanted to mention a couple of agenda items and how they relate to specific projects. The first one is Resolution 2252-2022. It establishes a procedure for consultant selection for PennDOT Multimodal Transportation Fund grants, and it's specifically related to the grant for the improvements at Vermont and Glendale. PennDOT is requiring us to adopt these procedures and follow these procedures for the consultant selection. Under normal circumstances, we would have our township engineer perform these services, but we have to go through this process of selecting the consultant in accordance with PennDOT's policies and procedures. The project is an evaluation and design of pedestrian safety improvements and traffic improvements at that intersection. It includes an extension of the trail from Merry Place to the intersection. And currently, while we go through this process of adopting consultant selection procedures, we did ask Panoni to perform what's known as an intersection control evaluation. And that will allow us to move forward with the least possible work we could do on the project before we have to engage a consultant to do the full engineering for the work. So, that's a brief summary of Resolution 2252-2022. The other one is Resolution 2254-2022, and it's related to the same area. And this authorizes the township manager to execute granted contracts and other agreements with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a grant that we have been awarded that will extend that trail from the intersection of Vermont and Glendale all the way down to McDonald Field, Warrior, and Vermont. And so, both of these resolutions are on the agenda for tonight, and they're both good news. They're really good news. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Township Manager. I will now accept a motion to approve first the reorganization meeting minutes of January 4th, 2022.
Motion to approve the reorganization minutes of January 4th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. McCluskey. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
So, I'll give Connor that one. Connor, a second from Commissioner Quinn. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 10th, 2022.
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 10th, 2022.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey, and Commissioner Vice President Trombetta for the second. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, or additions to the regular meeting minutes of January 10th, 2022? Hearing none, Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We will now entertain a motion to approve warrant number two of 2022.
Mr. President, motion to approve the following warrant, number two, 2022, totaling $3,44,605.92 general and sewer fund payroll for January 20th, 2022, the amount of $745,414.28. General and sewer fund payroll, February 3rd, 2022, in the amount of $658,245.57. General fund disbursements, number two, 2022, in the amount of $1,393,719.46. Sewer fund disbursements, number two, 2022, in the amount of $27,606.26. Community Development Block Grant Fund Disbursement, number two, 2022, in the amount of $48,308.51. Capital Projects Fund Disbursement, number two, 2022, in the amount of $80,917.50. American Rescue Plan Fund Disbursement, number two, 2022, in the amount of $57,305.25. ACHPA Office of Unemployment Benefits in the amount of $5,749.29. Credit Card Statement, ending January 27th, 2022, in the amount of $18,239.80.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey and Commissioner Wexler for the second. Are there any questions, comments, or additions to the warrants? Hearing none. Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will now entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Discover Haverford. For those of you not paying attention, that is the organization formerly known as HPED, to administer the facade improvement grant program.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a professional service agreement with Discover Haverford, HPED, to administer a facade improvement grant program.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Vice President Trombetta and Commissioner Quinn. Are there any questions or comments on this agreement? I recall from when we first discussed this, I guess it was a month ago, there were then going to be some changes made. And is anybody dissatisfied with or want any explanation of the changes that were made to the professional services agreement? Hearing none, Mr. President? I'm sorry, Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number P1 of 2022?
Mr. President?
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P1, 2022, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways: special purpose parking zones in front of 142 Juniper Road.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners Hart and Wexler. Any questions or comments? Mr. Township Manager, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number P3 of 2022?
Mr. President?
Ah, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P3, 2022, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways: special purpose parking install in front of 2218 Brynmar Avenue in Ardmore and in front of 819 Penn Street in Brynmar. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender and Vice President Trombetta. Are there any questions or comments about these two installations? Hearing none, Mr. President.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry, Mr. Township Manager.
Thank you. Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number P4 of 2022?
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P4, 2022, further amending Chapter 30, pensions and employee benefits.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners McCluskey and Wexler. Are there any questions regarding the ordinance number P4, amending our pensions and employee benefits? I know that we got an explanation about this from our finance director. So, hearing no questions or comments, Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We are now moving past ordinances to resolutions on our agenda. I will -- the Board will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2250 of 2022, approving Haverford Township's comprehensive fee schedule.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2250, 2022, approving Haverford Township's comprehensive fee schedule.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners Cavender and Quinn. Do we have any questions or comments on this resolution? Actually, I should preface that by saying, while we did discuss this at last week's meeting, it has been advised to us that this -- that these were discussions appropriately held in executive session. I will disclose to the public that there were email and telephonic conversations among the Board within the context of executive discussions. So, this has been discussed. That said, I cannot prevent any commissioner from saying anything they'd like to, if they'd like to. So, does anyone have any questions or comments about 2250? Hearing none, Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
No.
Commissioner Wexler?
No.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Before I cast my vote, Commissioner Wexler, do you mean no on this one, or do you mean no on the next one?
I meant no on this one.
Okay. I vote yes. I will now -- the Board will consider a motion to adopt Resolution 2251, professional consultant fees.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2251-2022, establishing a general schedule for reimbursement of fees, costs, charges, and expenses of the municipality's professional consultants. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion moved by Vice President Trombetta and seconded by Commissioner Cavender. I may correct myself. It was not the previous resolution that we had executive discussions about. It was this resolution we had executive discussions about. That said, does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
No.
Commissioner Hart?
No.
Commissioner Wexler?
No.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2252?
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution 2252-2022, approving the PennDOT PA Department of Transportation's policy and procedure for consultant selection involving multimodal grant-funded projects.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners McCluskey and Wexler. Do we have any questions or comments about Resolution Number 2252? Hearing none, Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2253 of 2022, the transfer of funds.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2253-2022, authorizing transfer of 2021 funds. Second.
Second.
Thank you. We're motion Vice President Trombetta and seconded by Commissioner Quinn. That's right. Do we have any questions or comments on the transfer of 2021 funds? Hearing none, Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2254-2022, involving the Recreation Department Commonwealth of Pennsylvania reimbursement agreement.
Mr. President?
Yes.
A motion to adopt Resolution Number 2254-2022, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, Delaware County, that the township manager is hereby authorized to sign grant contracts and grant agreements with the Commonwealth and its agencies related to the reimbursement agreement R. 2206002, Pency Trail, and sign this agreement on behalf of the township.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners Hart and Commissioner Wexler. Do we have any questions or comments on the reimbursement agreement? Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will entertain two separate motions to purchase items. The first motion would be to purchase a number of vehicles?
Mr. President, make a motion to authorize the purchase of the following vehicles for the Highway Department. One, 2023 International Cabin Chassis HV507 for a full-size dump truck from Hunter International Logan Township, New Jersey, under CoStarz contract 025-102 in the amount of $74,526. In addition, one stainless steel dump body with 10-foot spreader for chassis above from HR D. Hart &amp; Son Thoroughfare, New Jersey, under CoStarz contract 025-052 in the amount of $79,985. Also, one 2023 International Cabin Chassis for a forestry truck from Hunter International in Logan Township, under CoStarz contract 025-102, in the amount of $93,463. One forestry body for chips for chassis above from HAD D. Hart &amp; Son Thoroughfare, New Jersey, under CoStarz contract number 025-052, in the amount of $52,537. And one brush bandit intimidator 15XP drum-style chipper from Modern Group Limited, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, under CoStarz contract 025-021, in the amount of $74,526.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners Wexler and Hart. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the purchase of these vehicles?
Yeah, I did.
Actually, for the benefit of our new commissioners, Finance Director Cuthbertson, could you just explain the CoStarz contracts?
CoStarz is a state program that is administered by the state. The state will go out and negotiate prices that all member municipalities may benefit from, and thus eliminate each member municipality from going out and bidding and creating specs on our own, so we can use the purchasing power of the state.
Thank you for that explanation. Assuming that has answered rather than raised the questions, I will then ask Township Manager to call the roll.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The Board will entertain a motion to approve the purchase of information technology?
Mr. President, motion to approve the purchase of one SANDL 325 server from Hewlett-Packard Enterprise, San Jose, California, in the amount of $29,837.18, under CoStarz contract 003-443, for a total price of $29,837.18.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners Hart and Quinn. Does anyone have any questions about the purchase of the server? Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now move to some remaining appointments. The first appointment would be to the Environmental Advisory Committee. The second ward, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp, do you have a appointment?
Yes, I would like to appoint Joy Baxter of 1713 Sewell Land Drive to serve as, serve on the EAC.
Thank you, and please thank your constituent for serving. We move to the senior citizens' advisory board. There are several wards, including mine, which are still not represented. Mr. D'Amelio is not here tonight. I hope he feels better. Second ward, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
I'd like to appoint Kristi McLaughlin of 100 Land Afro to serve as our representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
I'd like to reappoint Diane Amadio.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. And the sixth ward, regrettably, I still need to contact my previous representative and determine her interest, and so I have to pass on this. It is now -- we return to the Citizens Forum. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak for three minutes on a non-agenda item. I will once again go to the left side of the room and then the right. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours. So, anyone here on the left side of the room, would anyone like to speak? Would anyone like to speak on a non-agenda item? Come forward. If you could just tell us your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Jeff Lane. I live at 211 Brookline Boulevard. I am here just to speak of something that was raised at the Parks and Recs Board meeting in prior weeks. So, I support, I'm the VP of Baseball at Brookline, baseball and softball. And we are at a critical moment of getting our permits issued, like they always are at the start of, the end of winter, start of spring. We are looking at an issue that was raised around lighted fields. And it's been raised by other programs in the area, and they're looking to get access to fields that we currently use. We have access to lights now. We obviously use Veterans Field up here, which, you know, is beautiful, just got, you know, lit up with lights. We haven't used it yet, we haven't seen it for baseball. We are looking forward to that. We are trying to get the season started and figure out where to move from here. So, permits get issued in the next few days. We have over 800 kids registered, 600-plus games we normally have on a given year. All community, you know, Havertown residents. 75 teams, you know, that we look to schedule across this location. Our primary main field is Gentherd Field. That is our lighted field that we've had for years. We need to use that field. Our biggest issue is we can't lose it. We can't lose our field space with this many players. Our registration continues to go up. We are dedicated to making that field our premier location like we always have. We take care of it, we clean it up. We've invested a lot of league funds into keeping that, you know, continuing to grow as a spot for us to use. And we do the same thing up here at Veterans Field as well. But, you know, just stressing our concerns with where we're at at this point heading into permits getting issued. I understand the lighted fields, you know, is something that's been raised. I just want to make sure that, you know, you as all the commissioners know that our registration is continuing to grow, and we really can't lose access to those permits. And I know it's Parks and Recs, you know, responsibility to issue those permits, but just making that known here. So, thanks for hearing us out.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on this side of the room who'd like to speak? And is there anyone on this side of the room who would like to speak? So, that will conclude our Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. Mr. Lane, I can assure you, Parks and Rec has been listening to, paying a great deal of attention to all the interested parties in this, including your comments tonight. We do expect them to come out with all the permits this week. We, as a board, do rely on, on these professionals to get this right, and, and we count on them to get, to take in as much input from the affected residents and obviously the kids who play as they can. So, I have faith, as I hope you do too, that these folks will, will make the right decisions. Is there, we will now move to new business. Does any commissioner have any new business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Hart.
In the EC period and before COVID, commissioners needed to be physically present at, it was expected them to be physically present at meetings. When COVID hit, obviously, our meetings became, on an emergency basis, we met over Zoom. Now that the emergency is over, we are having, we have had at times hybrid meetings. I'm wondering if we should put this in our code, that this is something that we're, we're going to allow on an ongoing basis. So, while we need a quorum of commissioners to be here present, if someone can't be here, we are now allowing it. It doesn't seem like, should be something. I know in the past, before I was on the board, there was a commissioner who wanted to attend a meeting remotely. It was voted down. So, I'm thinking that we should at least discuss this, whether we want to have the ability to have hybrid meetings.
I think, I mean, I think that's definitely something, I think there's, I think there's a corollary to that as well, which is also the virtual participation of citizens in these meetings, which I think is probably something we could separately take up. Obviously, tonight, we had awardees of our proclamation who could only participate virtually. And silver lining of COVID is that we've now created a virtual environment where that can happen. I will rely on our township solicitor to advise us of the, of right now, whether we can operate within our own powers to pass ordinances to allow us to adjust those rules for commissioner purposes, or whether this is mandated by the charter. I don't know that off the top of my head. But I think this is a, I think this is a very good topic for us to consider. And, and I invite any comments from my colleagues.
May I comment?
You may, Mr. Walco.
Thank you. The Charter does not address the specifics of remote participation at meetings. However, the First Class Township Code, which is what defaults to if the Charter doesn't apply, does. And as you mentioned, the First Class Township Code unfortunately doesn't permit a completely virtual meeting. However, as you mentioned, if there is a quorum present, it does provide for telecommunication for remote participation. It's supposed to be for purposes of traveling on business or emergencies or illness. Certainly, I would think a fear of an illness, something that could apply. So, it is provided for in the First Class Township Code. If there is a desire to make that into a expected, usual, procedural aspect of every meeting moving forward. One, I think it would be important to see if the township could handle that from an administrative point of view with the technology and with the ability to arrange each meeting to make sure that there is a quorum present. And two, I think the second question would be whether or not that would be for simply the commissioners only, or whether or not you would also want to provide for the public to be able to participate in those meetings that way. I don't believe there is a requirement that you would have to require the public to participate. You know, in the olden days, there was just the telephone that you could call in and make comment on the telephone. And the public couldn't call on the telephone, but the elected officials could. So, I think this would be an equivalent. So, it's certainly something that the board could consider, consider making an amendment to the Charter if it was something that you wanted to regularly provide for, or providing for an ordinance in the appropriate section related to the ongoing meetings and procedures at meetings. But there, there would have to always be a quorum present at that meeting. There's nothing you can do to get around that at this time unless there's a change made at the Commonwealth level.
Yeah, and, and I mean, just, this is the first I'm considering this issue. I think for purposes of just continuing the public's trust in us as a body, especially individuals committed to doing this job, I would, I would hope that no matter what actions we took or allowed, we would still insist that there, that the public always see, at least the majority of us elected officials here in this room, doing this job barring some real strange, you know, change of circumstances with this pandemic or some other. But again, I'm, Commissioner Hart and I are two of nine people. Does anybody have any other thoughts or suggestions on this?
Well, I think it can be, like, that, that can be abused too, in like a way. Like, say, like, you have like a cough or something and you're like acting sick. I think, yeah, I'm just saying, like, and, because I, I know that we all want to be here every, or every month, and I think it's good for everybody to see us here. I think that's, that's the best, the best thing, and there shouldn't be an excuse. I think that's showing that we were let, 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 we were elected to do, to do, to do this job from here, I believe, not from our homes.
I do agree with you, Commissioner Quinn.
I, I certainly think over the last year and a half, there were circumstances that required it, and, you know, I think we've, we acted accordingly to what was going on. I, for one, would just like some time to consider it and collect my thoughts on this, and maybe we can put it on the work session next month or sometime. I just, I don't, I don't want to speak harsh, rashly without giving it some time to think about.
Yeah, I would be fine with that. I'm just bringing it up. I mean, again, there was, it was Commissioner Lewis who was not allowed to participate remotely when he was traveling. So, it seems that we should clarify that. This was four or five years ago now, but.
Yeah. If I heard Mr. Walco correctly, the First Class ordinance would have, does allow that if you're, if you can't be here.
Correct.
And it was one person. Like, I'm, I'm going to have a conflict, I'll tell you now, in April. I'm going to have a procedure done on April 1st. I'll be non-ambulatory for six weeks. So, I will not be able to be here for the work session. It'll be the first million I've missed in 14 years.
Legally, legally, you would be able to participate in that meeting as long as you're able to hear going on, and also able to comment on what's going on.
So, I think the code is, it covers what we do. We, we actually, this meeting is live on our cable access channel, so all our residents have access to see it. So, I think we've done a pretty good job. And if somebody really had a heartbreak, we could let them ask a question by Zoom because that's not covered by the code, and that's an additional thing that we could, we actually do already, so.
Well, I see no reason why this shouldn't appear on our work session agenda for the March meeting. And the only caveat to that would be, Mr. Walco, I will just ask you to inform us as a board prior to that meeting whether or not these discussions would be appropriate for executive session or whether, whether they're appropriate for public. And I'm, I'm not going to guess one way or another on that. But I think that's, I think that's a fine point. Does any other commissioner have any other new business they would like to discuss or raise? So, I will move to other business at this point. Commissioner Forsti Grubb, anything to report?
I would just like to say that now is the time that all the volunteer fire departments are doing their fundraising drive. And I would encourage everyone to return their donation because that's how they maintain their, their fire companies, which are all volunteer. And then the other thing I would add is that the library is having Amnesty Week now until next Sunday. So, if you've got a library book that you, has prevented you from coming into the library, come and return it without any fines. And then because I'm an English teacher, and this is Black History Month, I've got a great suggestion for a book, and that if you need something to read, Zora Neale Hurston's Their Eyes Are Watching God is a tremendous book about a black woman's search for what she thinks is going to bring her happiness, and then she finds out it's something different. So, reading is always a pleasure, and it widens your perspective. And I hope we can all do that during this month by reading this great book. Or something else.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. McCloskey. You must be happy now that you can return C, Dick, and Jane without any penalties.
Yes, I rented it from the Upper Darby Free Library in 1986. I just wanted to highlight, again, we've talked about it a couple of times over the last couple of meetings, but there is a, for the businesses in Haverford Township, a very easy process that we're doing facade improvement grants up to $10,000. It's pretty open. You know, we're going to do it through the township with the assistance of Discover Haverford. There's information on their website and on the township website. But I would just encourage any business, you know, this, this is money that's designed to help you following a pandemic, and it's to help you improve the appearance of town, and we'll all benefit from it. So, I really, you know, I don't want anyone to not apply for fear of it being too onerous or anything like that. You know, it's money that we, we want to be able to provide to our local small businesses that, you know, have been through a lot over the last two years, and hopefully, this will help spruce up your business presentation to everybody and attract more business, which is, which is the goal. So, I just want to highlight that again and really encourage, if you know anybody, or, you know, I don't think every small business owner watches these meetings, so, but if you know anybody, reach out to them and encourage them to look into it. It's, it's a significant investment and good money for you. And then also, Saturday was a beautiful weather day. I know everybody in town, Mr. Lane was talking about Little League baseball, and Little League starts soon. And regardless of permit, any permitting issues, the thought of spring, I think, is a welcome, welcome sight for all of Havertown. So, hopefully, everybody's ready for it, and it gets here soon, and the groundhog was wrong. And that's all I have this month.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. I just wanted to update on an open forum that we held in Ward 5 on Polo Field on February 3rd. If you're not familiar with it, it's an 18-acre park in the northwest corner of our township in, in Ward 5. For years, it's been used and operated by both Lower Marion and Haverford Township. Lower Marion has proposed a plan to supplant its use of baseball and softball fields for its new middle school, which is being built in Villanova beginning in spring 2024. We had an open forum on this in the ward for the community, and I just wanted to encourage everyone who has questions to reach out to their commissioner or to Township Manager Berman to express any thoughts or ask any questions. It's a real resource for the township, and it's one that is important to all of us. And I think that's been made even more clear over the last couple of years during the pandemic, and it's important to everyone's health. I also wanted to just mention that tomorrow night, ElderNet of Lower Marion and Narberth is hosting an Aging in Place Safely virtual panel with health and aging experts from around the area. Panelists will discuss fall prevention in the home, assessing for safety hazards, and accessing township and county services for seniors in our community. If you have questions, you can email eldernetstaff@gmail.com for more information. And I would just ask everyone to stay safe out there and enjoy the snow while we have it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn.
I would, what was I about to say? The Seventh Ward seems to have all the potholes in another town. So, that's a thing, I'm sure you guys are thrilled that they're all in my, my, my ward. And they're all, and they seem to all be on the state roads too. So, that's the issue when I get calls, and we can't do anything about, about that. So, right, or what's the, what's the issue, or how can we, what do they do? They call me, and then how do I fix that for them? If you don't mind me asking.
Commissioner, so funny you mention it. This morning, I met with Public Works because I had the same issue on state roads, Monroe Road, Brookline Boulevard, and Danny Marionade did call the state, and a lot of them were filled today, so.
Yeah, I saw Penn, Penn, not Al, the Al.
So, we'll, we'll stay on top of that, so.
Well, thank, thank you all, and I, for one, hope the snow goes away fast and spring comes fast, and the fillies are packed the ball, so, all right, bye.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, Commissioner, Mr. President. I was reading an article today, pedestrian deaths are up substantially the last few years. Crashes killing pedestrians have climbed nearly 50% in the past decade. The reasons include speeding, distracted driving, and aggressive driving. Well, thankfully, we saw no pedestrian deaths in Haverford last year. I believe most of us are seeing these same dangerous trends of the aggressive, distracted driving as well as speeding on our local roads. And unfortunately, to quote an old Pogo cartoon, we've seen the enemy and he is us. Most people, most of the drivers locally are Haverford residents. So, it's up to us to try to reverse these trends. So, it's all of us just try to slow down, drop the phone, don't be angry when you're driving, and let's be safe for all of us on those roads, pedestrians and bikers and, and drivers. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Wexler.
Yes, and very opportune, Commissioner. Unattentive driving, we. Unattentive driving, we had a near, near miss in front of Manoa School the other day, and maybe the chief, but it was a family out walking, it was a nice day. Car made a turn, the father was fortunate enough to see it and was able to push the baby stroller out of the way. The mother suffered some leg damage, and the father gets some contusions. So, it's a real problem. It happens in our area, happens everywhere. This was near a school, and just got to pay attention, and please, speeding and staying off the cell phone while you're driving is, is key. Second safety thing I'll bring up is being a volunteer fireman. Things we see, leaving, cooking on the stove. As I'm sure the other members that are here, you get, we get kind of attuned to fire alarms in a house, and you don't pay much attention, and when we get there, you get, you hear on the radio, the police officer sees smoke in the house, and somebody left a pot unattended, and the smoke, the house is full of smoke. So, it turns in from one company being dispatched just to check on an alarm to three companies going for a dwelling fire. So, please pay attention when you're cooking. Second thing I'll mention is hair curlers. Please unplug them when you're done. They're the second thing that we come across. Now, I don't have it anymore. And then the third thing are candles. Candles on the, I'm probably the Grinch, I have four daughters, they all love candles. I forbid them on the second floor of the house. I don't know how many house fires we've had in the last 20-some years that I've been active, started by candles. Candle falling, catching a drape, catching a curtain underneath on a windowsill, catching some other item, and then light off a cabinet in a kitchen area, but especially in bedrooms. They're very, very usually used by young, young people, and they're very, very simple to use, but they turn dangerous very quick. And the materials that catch fire in a bedroom are polysters, and they, you know, bedspreads go up like a Christmas tree, curtains go up that way, so that, just paying attention to the safety thing. And then my last thing is, I put in my monthly Hilltop Civic, could use your volunteers. Great organization coming up in the spring now that we're getting there. I know spring's coming, because I saw my first commercial for the Masters Tournament last week, so we're getting there. But they have their spring garden contest coming up, Easter egg hunt, movie night. Great organization for all our neighborhoods. Please volunteer, contact them. They meet by, every quarter at the Bon Air Firehouse. Good organization, but they could always use more help. Thank you.
Mr. Wexler, if I, if I could, I think there's, there's one other hazard that particularly comes up in the winter that I don't think a lot of people are aware of. A lot of us use space heaters in our basements, and our basements often also have televisions and computer equipments in them. So, people make the mistake of plugging space heaters into power strips. Space heaters should only be plugged directly into a three-prong outlet in a wall. They are the only ones that are prepared to handle the heat that is generated at the, at the plug of a space heater. There are fires everywhere that are as a result of, of, of space heaters that are plugged into either extension cords or into worse, power strips. And people are under the impression that a power strip will trip if you overheat it. They will not. They will trip if you have a surge in electricity, but that power strip will melt, it will burn, it will set your carpet on fire, it will ultimately set your house on fire. Please, during these cold months, be careful.
Yeah, we find, most of the, most of the power strip fires we've, are behind a bed, near a rug, underneath a rug in a bedroom, more, more common ones. The space heaters are an issue. They're 1,500 watts. They usually trip a circuit breaker before, if you plug a second thing into that outlet. But you're right, power strips are very dangerous. They get warm even with computers, phone chargers, all the like, especially in bedrooms. We see a lot of those, and Chief, you could probably comment as well. A lot of, a lot of second-floor fires start from a power strip in the second floor.
Those power strips are rated also, so if people pick up any power strip, they are rated by wattage, what they can handle, so.
Yeah, those plastic ones are especially, they melt too, so.
Thank you both. Vice President Trump, better.
Thank you. First, Commissioner Quinn, just kind of to piggyback off of that, motorists who see potholes on Pennsylvania-owned roads can actually call 1-800-FIX-RIDE. That's a PennDOT phone number that you can report those potholes, and they're supposed to go fix them eventually, I'm sure. Also, you may have noticed that there's been a lot of Girl Scout cookie stands popping up this month, and while we love their cookies, yes, I brought some for each of the commissioners for Valentine's Day to show them a little love. But while we love their cookies, Girl Scouts are so much more than my personal favorite, Caramel Delights. Girl Scouts provide an opportunity for girls to grow and achieve in a supportive environment through achieving badges and selling cookies. Scouting fosters independence and teaches girls about how to plan and reach for, reach goals. It's no surprise that 80% of women entrepreneurs in the United States are former Girl Scouts. Perhaps best of all, they are encouraged in a supportive way to enjoy an active lifestyle and to honor and treasure the outdoors and the environment. So, next time you do see a cookie stand, I hope you'll buy a box or two to support our future women leaders, entrepreneurs, and civil servants. Couple other announcements, registration's now open for the Haverford Township Adult School for the spring 2022 semester beginning on Monday, March 7th. They're providing both in-person and virtual classes, and you can visit www.haverfordadultschool.org to see their online catalog and to register. And then finally, I saw something recently about the fact that the Red Cross is experiencing the worst blood shortage in over a decade. They have a dangerously low blood supply, and they're asking people to donate if they can. So, I encourage you to go online to redcrossblood.org to schedule your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just have, I just have a couple of comments, and they are about our proclamation from earlier tonight, June 7th, 2020, was a profoundly moving day here in Haverford Township, and the young, the young people that we heralded today did a really outstanding job organizing a significant march through the center of Havertown, and then presented a very, very moving and substantial program. Part of that program involved reading aloud the names of many African-American men, women, and children who've lost their lives, and at a time of the year, in June of 2020, where so many high school and college graduations would be taking place, and we would all be accustomed to hearing the lists of graduates and of awardees and of honorees, to hear instead the heartbreaking recitation of so many people who had died. It was a jarring and eye-opening moment for many of us in attendance. And imagining then, if George Floyd, or Breonna Taylor, or any of these people were your father, or your mother, or your sister, or your brother, or your friend, or your neighbor, really made us think twice, and it really helped us begin to imagine, understand, and feel some of that pain. And what I hope is that we can convey, convert that pain into positive energy and make a difference in our community. The time is now. On that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.